Good morning, everyone. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing we need to do is approve the minutes from the August 5th meeting. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Also approval of the August 15th executive session. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Legal issues.
Just one thing today, it's the acceptance of a maintenance bond for the Greasefield subdivision for the storm and subsurface drains in the amount of seventy thousand five hundred twenty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's all I have.
That's it. All right, the childhood cancer awareness month. Did I pull up the wrong one? So we approved two minutes that... Golly, I wondered why that was. Okay, let me use my paperwork now instead of my computer. All right, never mind on that one. We will move on to Boom County Hospital Association appointments. Good morning, now I'm back on the right. Please, please help yourself.
Good morning, I am Kelly Roberman, I am here representing Witham as the CEO and John Brandt, our Chair of the Board, and before you have, I believe we sent a packet of information of some appointments that we would appreciate your consideration of.
Any questions?
You just want to kind of go over?
Sure, I'll be too. So the first one is for the Boom County Hospital Association, and just as a reminder, that was formed for the oversight and assurance of the hospital bond payments by the Board of Trustees, and the term for Margaret Walters is due to expire at end of this year, and so we asked at the August 13th Boom County Hospital Association Annual Meeting to recommend that therefore in front of you submit her name again for consideration for reappointment, and so that would be the first one. The second one for the Boom County Hospital Association is because Phil Mathiabold voluntarily resigned her term effective July 11th, and so we would like to submit Michelle Randolph's name for consideration, and her resume is attached. And so she would be appointed for a three-year term ending in 2027 to fill Phil's seat. Those are the two for the Boom County Hospital Association, if you'd like, I could go to do the work.
We'll take care of these first.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Margie and to appoint Michelle Randolph.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now please.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda relates to the Board of Trustees. As Kelly noted, on the Chair of the Board of Trustees, there is a reappointment for another term, for me to continue another four years through 2028, and then also we submitted the bio and letter of interest from Julie Reagan. Thanks for any questions related to her background, she, the recommendation for her to join the Board, with the Board, and that will get us fully to our sixth full slate of Board trustee members. She's had great community involvement, involved with the Boom County Community Foundation. She has a background in RP Communications, which is a gap that we have with our current slate of Board members, so we would ask for your approval of Julie and the reappointment to the current Board Chair. How I speak to his capabilities. We appreciate, we bundled, we have four items that come before you here today, two reappointments and two news, so we bundled all of those in one meeting, so unless some, you shouldn't see us again in November or December, right, so for the reappointments.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question, do you, do you like advertise for these board positions? Because I was, like, on the Witham Board, we had somebody submit last year, so I was just kind of curious what the process is, if you guys go through.
We don't publicly advertise it, we have a roster, a list of candidates, that anyone in the community brings those forward to Kelly or myself, and then we'll put those individuals on the list. This most recent appointment, I think we started with seven individuals that have been either expressed interest or had those characteristics, so be happy to, as those things come along, to make sure we add any input that any of you have for people that are willing and able to serve to make us aware of that. All right, I'll make a motion to reappoint John Brandt and to appoint Julie Reagan.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is Evergreen.
Did you want to speak to?
I can if you need to.
It's just a letter.
Yeah, why don't you come on, Phil, and just explain everything, it's been a year since you've been here probably.
Sure, my name is Phil Schlock, I'm with Atlas, we're an environmental consultant for Evergreen, it's on the former Sunoco property, was it 206-5 Indianapolis Avenue? Going back and forth with IDEM and where the property boundaries are, they were a little bit different than where we had previously thought, we had a professional survey done. We had previously come to you with what we thought were the property boundaries, and talking about an ERC, Environmental Restrictive Covenant, on the Fairgrounds property. With the professional survey done, and that shift in the property lines, IDEM decided, or because what remains really remains on the Sunoco property, not really on the Fairgrounds property, what, and meaning what remains is anything above the IDEM criteria for, really in the groundwater, there's, what's left in the soil is all below the criteria. So, that puts the Environmental Restrictive Covenant on the Sunoco, former Sunoco property, which has been approved by IDEM recorded, and that's in the letter that was presented to you. The IDEM project manager, Roxanne Sanders, wanted us to present this to you because of that, since we talked about an ERC and then not an ERC, so why the change, and then wanted just some form of acknowledgement that you understand why we did or what was done and why that was. So then also in the letter is, I guess, the, the ERC that was recorded for this former Sunoco property, the access agreement, which is now basically revoked, all the wells have been abandoned, closed, and the well cover is removed. We did not remove, like, all the, from the remediation system, the subgrade piping, so I didn't tear up the whole yard again. So that stuff, yes, that remains underground, but everything at the surface has been removed. Same thing, the wells, deeper, they, they still exist, but they're, they've been sealed with bentonite and closed, as normal wells are by a waterwell driller.
So I reviewed the letter and the report that Phil references, and again, this is removing all of the environmental restrictions on the Fairgrounds property, this will go to IDEM, and then they will issue an NFA, no further action, letter at that point, close everything off.
Correct, so Roxanne said she would not issue that, it's basically, it's written, it's ready to go, just wanted to make sure you guys understood what, what was done, why it was done, and with that acknowledgement, then she can issue that, and the no further action letter, and then I'll send that to you as well, so you have that for your records.
In this letter, for your signature, she's just acknowledging that you understand this, that Phil's been here and presented this.
Do we need to pass the exception of this?
Yes, so I would recommend a motion acknowledging Phil's presence in the report that he's submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the JDAI, Laura Thompson.
Hi, good morning, Laura Thompson, I'm JDAI Coordinator, what I'm bringing you today is just two things, contracts and MLUs for basically people who receive funds from JDAI grant funding. The contracts just spell out what the grant funds will be given for, and their acknowledgement that those funds will not be used for anything else. Some of those contracts are for county employees, probation officers specifically, for things they do outside of regular business hours, that they get additional funding from JDAI for, and then some of them are non-county employees. And then MLUs are for organizations, so those organizations would be the County Mentorship and Mentorship Program, WHAM and WADE, the after-school programs in Thorntown and Happy Heights, and a data corporation that we are contracting with, that's called Impact Solutions, so those are the MLUs, and the contracts are right there as well. Again, that's all funding that's been granted through JDAI, just acknowledging how those funds will be used.
Yes, they're all under standard MLU, JDAI Grant Administration Agreement, and they're just up for annual removal, so recommend removal of all of those.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. All right, Max, you're next on the agenda.
Good morning, I have two things for you guys this morning, first one is with Perfection Group, it's to replace two rooftop units on the courthouse, we are twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars on that one. These were budgeted items for the show.
Any questions? I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Second, I have with you is an agreement with Priority Waste, we were looking to move from Waste Management to Priority, we're looking at a savings of about two hundred and twenty dollars a month by making that switch.
I did have a couple of minor changes to the agreement, so I would ask for your approval subject to those changes.
Move to approve subject to the changes, Bob, has to move?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Thanks. All right, time clock plus renewal.
We received the original contract, the amount on there is from each.
Eighteen thousand one hundred and five dollars and five cents.
And that's based off of per user in the system.
Questions? Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The 2025 holiday schedule.
Yes, okay, this is the proposed schedule. Twenty twenty-five official county holiday closings, Wednesday, January 1st, New Year's Day, Monday, January 20th, MLK Day, February 17th, President's Day, Friday, April 18th, Good Friday, Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day, July 4th, Independence Day, September 1st, Labor Day, October 13th, Columbus Day, November 11th, Veterans Day, November 27th and 28th, Thanksgiving and the day after, Wednesday, December 24th, Christmas Eve, Thursday, December 25th, Christmas Day, and Friday, December 26th, Washington's Birthday. Those all coincide with state holidays, as issued by the Governor's Office.
You're missing two, Juneteenth, New Year's Eve, I was bringing it up there. There you go, yeah. Juneteenth is a funeral holiday.
They've been considered.
You can take Juneteenth and use it as New Year's Eve.
That's what we've done with Washington's Birthday?
Yeah.
How many total are there, Bob?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
The state observes twelve.
I don't know what the federal observes.
State, state does not observe Juneteenth.
So there is, there is nothing, don't take this wrong, the last day of the year, there is nothing as far as financial documents or anything that needs to be done on?
We can't do anything on the thirty-first, because we always close our books on the thirtieth, because we don't, I mean, everything has to be turned in by like ten o'clock in our office, and the treasurer has to do it, so by that, I mean, we always head off on the thirtieth anyway, so it doesn't affect the three offices on the second floor.
Okay, I'm going to ask you another question or two, because I don't?
And all property stuff has until January 5th.
Okay, so there is, there is a?
There's a link.
A link, yeah, that you can, because that's what, I guess one of my concerns is, is that you close down a day early, is there anything that needs to be done on that last day, whether it's taxes or, or claims or anything like that, so nothing can be done on that day?
All property stuff has until the 5th, and we can't take, we don't take any money on the thirty-first anyway, so somebody can come in with a sales disclosure or the?
It can't be done, okay. Okay, that helps me understand better, because I just, I'm looking at the last day of the year, you know, in private business, we try to get everything done we can, and then, so, all right, I understand that better.
And Don, for the Recorder's Office, we wouldn't be able to report anything that last day either, if they thought there was a deadline, because again, the financial side of that, we wouldn't be able to take financial transactions that day because of giving them to, giving them process and deposit by that end of the year, that timeframe, so that's quite how it would affect our office, and I think each of the other ones is the same thing.
All right. Questions, gentlemen?
I mean, I don't have any questions, I mean, the, there was some discussion about Friday, December 26th versus New Year's Eve, I think it makes sense to do one or the other. You know, and it could be amended now, it could be amended at a later time, but two, two, two additional days beyond what the state is consistent with what we did last year, so unless anybody else has any other comments, I would just move that we approve as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass what has been submitted with the, well, this is not part of your motion, but I don't make this statement with it can be amended at any point in time. So if, if after today we reevaluate everything, we need to, we need to change it then at the next meeting, it can be amended?
I'm guessing that Friday after Christmas was a discussion amongst just the Commissioners Office, because that wasn't elected official discussion? We didn't agree to that.
To have it or not have it?
To have it.
Okay.
I mean, if we're talking the Friday after or New Year's Eve, that must have just been a discussion amongst you guys.
It pretty much was, I think, just looking at the calendar there, you know, being on a Friday.
I mean, we had word for the Friday after the Fourth, so I don't know if it's any different.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to, to pass what is the draft that we have, but like I said, it can be amended at any meeting after this, so. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No one's opposed? It, then it stands as is, with the ability to at the next meeting, change it.
I would just say that it needs to be changed, if you're going to change it before the end of the year.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely, so. Thank you for the information, I appreciate that. All right, moving on to old business. Is there any?
Not in what I'm aware of.
Staff reports, area plan? Max, do you have anything else?
If I can give a project of these, like?
Please do.
Okay. Justice Center update, right now we are approximately eighty percent complete with the project, we continue to be on budget and on schedule. The crews out there have, are a hundred and twenty days without a reportable accident. We've been pushing cleanup on the site quite a bit, so inside the building and around the outside, they've been getting things cleaned up and trying to improve the, the look of things out there, no major issues to report at this time, and then just some quick milestones, they do have all of the RTUs up and running in units A and B, we made our final sanitary sewer connection last, was that Thursday morning, we shut down, made those connections, and with that, that gets all of our, our pumps, our lift pumps and grinders going, it also allows the Lebanon Range to be active again also. We've started kitchen startup, they'll be starting up all the equipment in the kitchen this week, along with that, we did our hood inspection, we, the light test for the exhaust hood, that all passed. Casework is being installed throughout the building. I've been working with the Sheriff's Department as well to get the shooting ranges back up to their specifications, the way they want those to be for safety. And I think that's all I've got there, unless you have any questions?
Questions?
Questions.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Health Department? IT? HR?
I just want to tell Marso our employees that we're going to be rolling out motion training this week, you can have it open through the end of the year, it's only through May of this year, so it'll be in the field of platform. I'm going to plan on just walking around to each department or if you want to schedule an appointment, so I can come into your office, help your people get logged in, we can still do it the same way we did in years past, where if you want to watch it all together and just send us a list, we can pass you automatically in the system, so I just want to make sure everyone is able to log in, no one has any problems, so I was going to make myself available to walk around in the next couple of weeks, and just be there if I need some support.
So we can do that New Year's Eve?
I'm all in on that one.
I'm all in.
So it'll be about four hours, I'll send you guys a list like I have in years past, I'll send out an email, I'll send out the timeframes of each training, but we're wrapping in, like, workplace harassment training, we're doing an IT training as well, so that's all going to be part of motion training this year.
I'm sorry, are part-time employees required to do that training too?
Anyone employed with us at the time, just, it's a federal law, so anyone we can get, and then I'm probably going to start requiring it with new hires, not with any of them in the system, it's going to start being a requirement for new hires as well, probably one, one and five, five. Question? Sorry, I talked more to them, questions, Ford? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Highway Department, Nick?
Nick, Department of Highway, one item today for consideration is a financial commitment letter for rehabilitation of Bridge 203, which is on Willow Road, it's just north of Templin Road, over Big Eagle Creek, so the northeast of Zionsville, this particular bridge falls within the Metropolitan Planning Organization's territory, which is a different pot of federal funding, or state funding in this case, that they use for infrastructure projects, so we're able to go after federal dollars through the rule call, which is through NDOT specifically, this is through the MPO, which is housed in Indianapolis, so they're actually swapping their dollars for state dollars, so we don't have to do NEPA documents, it frees up, makes it a little more flexible on speed of the project as well, I would have a call for projects open right now, and we talked about this bridge being, needing to do the bridge deck before it becomes a lot more expensive repair, this bridge is built in nineteen sixty-five, hasn't had any work done to it since then, worked with a consultant to get a detailed cost estimate, there's several things that have to be completed as part of the application process, and that's what I have submitted for execution, is the letter of funding commitment that we would provide our match, the MPO dollars only match construction and construction inspection at eighty percent, so we would be responsible for all of the design, right-of-way phase, and twenty percent of construction and construction inspection.
Questions? I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Only other two items I have are just for information, I want to let you know Charter Spectrum has complied with the requirements that we sent in the letter a couple of weeks ago, they, they have been working with our staff to get everything cleaned up on their, their main builds, as well as their drop lines, that's our understanding that they're going to go back to work, hopefully this week or next week, very soon, to get internet hooked up to folks that have desired that connection and haven't been able to get, working the right-of-way taken care of, also back to working on chip and seal, we've had substantial issues with their equipment and repairs of the equipment, but back to doing that again today, hopefully get that wrapped up sooner rather than later with their cold, cool mornings, cool overnight lows, we're running into a possible window where we can't get it done, so it's, it's been quite the burden since early June, also want to let you know, if you didn't know already, bridges seventeen and nineteen are closed around 1075 West, I've known it's cold back to Blacktop, goes on for forty-seven, so both those are closed, be reopened as a ninety-eight closure, so we're hoping for early October and November timeframe to get those bridges open. Is there any question?
Questions? Questions? Thank you. I do want to go back and, and correct one of the things that we did early, because I was wrong on that, is that we do need to approve the August nineteenth minutes, I gave you the wrong number, I think it's August seventeenth.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Elected officials, anyone?
Good morning, Debbie, I'm in her mechanic recorder, I appreciate you saying that the option, the options that we're looking at for the holidays are still open, can, I request that we have it on the next agenda, and then in the meantime, all of us put together some information and kind of go over, I think it's not just about everybody having a day off, honestly, there's a lot to consider, you know, if you're having the public come in and all the offices aren't able to do anything, except let them walk in our office and say you can't do anything, you know, there's some things to think about, and so we, I want you to, we want you to realize that it's not just, you know, a, a day off, and we've kind of done that before, and then the confusion that can come with that, with the, you know, the public, so I appreciate the opening to, to continue to talk, and so if we could have it on that agenda, we could get some stuff pulled together and get that to you early to look at, or discuss it at the next meeting, if that would be okay, then that way, we don't have to wait till the last day of the year, you know, to make a decision or not make a decision, or change a decision, could we do that, please?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other elected officials? Very none, we'll move on to documents.
I've got several claims related to the Justice Center project, and I'll go through them, first is three hundred and sixty-two thousand thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents, this is for the dispatch revisions and build-out, hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for de-watering, twenty-five Twenty-five thousand thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents for soil stabilization and shooting range. There was a change order related to the humidification of the RTUs, but that resulted in no additional cost. Sixty-six hundred dollars for the removal of six trash receptacles. Eighty-four thousand two hundred and three dollars for unsuitable soils and stabilization in the unit C parking area. Forty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is for, again, unsuitable soils for the installation of the road to the shooting range. And nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for modifications to relocate the existing fresh air intake. So I have a request approval of all of those, or ratification of those, I'm sorry.
Move to ratify.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then a batch of claims.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And that's all I've got for the document signing. Got a couple minor mail items received, releasing a bond claim from Shaw Industries, which supplied floor recovery to the Justice Center project. Little form letters, a couple of form letters from IDEM, and notification from AT&amp;T about data incident. That's all I've got.
That's it. All right. The last thing on their list is to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here.